This will probably be edited out, but that was Bertha announcing the start of the recording. Bertha is a big help sometimes. So the premise tonight is a special natural law group is we have a there's a 20 class group. I will pin Craig for this part since we're doing the little promotional here. Uh, this is the root of this is health alchemy, but we have Kelly Derry tonight on as a special call. Thank you, Kelly, for being here and we have Hunter as one of our usual special guests. And Eric and Jean and Julie, um, we've had a pretty nice tight group here for, I mean, 20 weeks plus. Some of us in and out less than I want to acknowledge Curtis too, who's not on the call tonight. And so the point of once we go through the, the 20 weeks is to somehow keep the container going. Cause now there's two groups that have done this to varying degrees. And then when the third group starts next January is we have some continuity. And so these monthly groups are their food for inspiration is what I'm going to call it. Food for connection, food for your soul, food for, I've had people come on like we had a young lady on who had cancer. And she just needed a lot of love and support and some of the, it was just me and four ladies, I think. So the ladies just, the older ladies just loved her up and man, it was just so well done. And so, you know, Kelly, you had mentioned earlier, yeah, that's part of the, every night it's a little different. Like I usually have a set agenda, but then there's the, you know, the feminine ways to be spontaneous. And like, you know, we have a special guest and so, um, tonight the premise is what story in the realm of natural laws? I was saying earlier, one third of natural laws, you have to understand your interpersonal psychology. How we relate with ourself, how we relate with life and death, how we relate with the things that arise in our consciousness. How we relate on the societal level? Have we studied our own fears? Have we self examined enough and pulled the jigsaw puzzle pieces of what each of us is? And seen where we're triggered, where we fall asleep at the wheel. Because a lot of what life is to accelerate evolution is just to remain more awake and aware. And that can be effortless, but so part of what we're teaching is also the discernment to know is when to be vigilant. And when to let go. Cause there's two forms of meditation and there's, that means there's two forms of living. One form is vigilant and tight. I'm going to concentrate. I'm going to keep my focus and get my practice and get my mantras. Um, and I keep my little sticky notes everywhere. And then I guess a little tighten them after a while, and then we can let go and let's let the funk, let the old programming run us. Let, let everything be as it is. And you know, we all know that there's a lot of programming and layers and brainwash and conditioning. So for many of us, myself included as I, I need to have a certain level of vigilance and a certain level of letting go. And having the discernment to know when to intervene is part of grace. And so having a relationship with grace is very important to me and to teach that with others is grace is a real thing, folks. Kelly knows this and anybody who, you know, you, you start to develop this love affair. With this thing that really running the show, actually, is you better have a love affair with it. Cause if you hate it, well, that's just going to be reflected in your life. Is that inner turmoil, you know, so why not have fun with this? That's about a third of natural law. The next third is how do I nourish this earth suit thing? You know, what are vitamins? What are minerals really? What is chemistry really? What are these agreed upon premises that are false that we need to actually see through? Our cells aren't reading chemistry. Our cells are reading frequency and energy, and we've agreed upon this premise called chemistry. But that's not what life has actually seen. It's a premise that we've agreed upon a concept. That's great. Let's use it for what it is though, and not worship the false idol. As the Bible talks about, right? So to me, yes, chemistry is a great tool, but am I going to say that a snapshot of me running a race at a period in time is in fact me? No, I'm going to say you're insane. So we get identified with the snapshots, don't we? Oh, I got this good picture. You know, that's selfie. You're identified with the snapshot. But when life is actually a process, a movement, a dance, you know? So that's another third is how do I, what do I eat? How do I sleep with self-care? And then the last third is the game. And this is the most insidious and beautiful thing and satisfying thing to learn how to play the game and not be used by the game called life. So get over it, folks, the earth is never going to be a utopian dream. It's just not meant what this realm is for. But the realm is full of utopian agendas that we can tap into. You know, you can create your own heaven or hell to a certain degree. You know, and so why not make the attempt to create a heaven and have a high value? And then that way, if you shoot, if you shoot too low, folks, then you've closed the door. Man, I'm, I'm like shooting high, like my health values are, you know, way up here like I eat healthy. Oh, really? What do you eat? Well, I've been in and out once in a week and I drink pasteurized milk, but it's organic. I have cooked color greens once a week. I have a bowel movement every three days. You consider that healthy, huh? It's like, well, your values are very tiny. You know, so we're here to teach, hey, we set our own limits, so why not take your limits higher and fail well? You know? And so that's the final piece is that's some common law part of this. That was the big draw was, you know, health alchemy is now a private membership association. Because there were certain benefits of like, like the Clinton foundation is a PMA. Maybe they're using the system to their advantage. Why don't I use the system to my advantage? You know, so that's the happy thought and the happy reality is that I know a guy that has his home on a PMA for 30 years and hasn't paid property taxes for 30 years. Under the PMA, cause you're not in the public jurisdiction. And so we were talking earlier, the final piece I'll bring into the intro here is, um, I was at a nationals meeting for the first time, the state nationals and Kelly was talking about, you know, a good government. And I'm with her, you know, we don't want to throw out the tools. Government is a word to describe an entity that could help people. You know, and, um, I, I know people in government too, good and bad. I've worked with mayors and, you know, facilitated all kinds of people in government. So the point is, is to uncover what's actually here now and then bring in the good stuff. Cause what's, what's happening right before our eyes is this disclosure stuff, you know? And whether you believe there's white hats or QAnons, it doesn't matter to me because there's something happening. And we're all here now. Like my point here is you understand the game by word choice. So that's the final piece is understanding the word choice. Um, and that not getting ourselves pigeonholed like if the officer of the law pulls you over, he says, duh, 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 duh. You did this. Do you understand? That's a code. If you say yes, you've now made him the magistrate, you're under his jurisdiction. So you say, no, I don't understand. You can see I comprehend you. You can say any other word you want, but don't say that what you're saying is I stand under you. It's code for I stand under you. Yes, Kelly.
Can I just go back?
Yes.
You said a lot.
That was my elevator speech.
Um, the, uh, what, I mean, you said a lot. It was very rich. There's a lot covered in just your last elevator speech. It could be a lot of different conversations.
Right. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that piece and package it up. And then these little side conversations will be another little blurbs if we need them. But that's the channel right there of just like, hey, public, you know, like this is, there's a few different versions of this. Like what is this thing called natural law, right? Oh, and Deanne's joining us for a minute. Okay, Kelly, shoot, go ahead.
Well, so the thing that caught my mind. There's a lot, but so I, I, I kind of captured that part of the inspiration. Is that there are a lot of humans and you didn't say this exactly, but this is what I'm gathering. There's a lot of humans on the planet. With a lot of utopian agendas, you, you actually said you, the word utopian agenda, which I thought was really cool. Because, because all everyone talks about is the dystopian agenda and we're being ushered into this reality and for me and I'm a victim and it's like
Right, right, right.
Why give that anymore energy? I'm over it. Two years. I'm not doing anymore. I'm not giving them anymore of my attention and energy. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I'm happy.
I'm happy because now I'm aligning with the utopian agenda instead of the dystopian agenda, which is dysfunctional. It's falling apart. Half of them are being arrested. Like, why? You're just seeing the trickle shakeout illusion. You know, it's like the matrix is imploding, but it's still there and you're just watching it turmoil around. Do we, how much energy and intention do we really want to give it? When there's this beautiful divine matrix? That we could give our whole heart, body, soul and mind and consciousness to.
Well, Deanne DeVille, a colleague of mine just joined, uh, when you were speaking, Kelly. And so I, I don't know if you've two have met, but man, I was just so, De, I'm so glad that you just saw Kelly. Um, Kelly's an old friend, Deanne. And, um, amazing, I mean, amazing human being. So, um, like Kelly, when you speak, like I remember the first time it was at the new leaf classroom, a number of years back. And you, there has been some shift in you. And not that it was bad before, but it was like this other level of Kelly 3.2 or Kelly, you know, 7.0. And it was like, there was this golden aura around you and you were teaching. And it was a, it was like, wow, this is next level Kelly. And it was like, you were just shining and it's like, some people call it, you found your voice. It's like you found your voice. And then I was like, oh, she's arrived. You know, like, wow. And not that you hadn't arrived before, but it's like another level for my perception.
No idea what you're talking about, but it sounds really cool.
Remember when you were teaching the new leaf on the west side, the classroom there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one of those classes.
Things there. Um, yeah, but that's really cool. Uh, that's, that's from you, Craig, who I've always felt like you're, you know, you're next level to hear that from you. You're really great. So thank you.
We're here to empower each other. Um, that's part of, uh, the one thing I'm going to bring in is if, if anybody wants a referral, I have this guy from India, no less, contact me of this big. I'll tell Deanne about it. Uh, Mandalay, the Mandalay Inn in Vegas are going to have six different groups of 500. And it's a three day event in December, like the 18th, 19th and 20th. And what they're trying to do is get all these different industries together for like envisioning the new world and leadership. And, and he said, yeah, we've been looking at your LinkedIn, your profiles and your referrals and your testimonies. You go, you're, you're definitely a leader in what you're doing. And I go, what, you understand a few things. So I, I give them the huge disclaimers, five minute rant. Went off about the whole, cause they're, they're mainstream. They're doing Medicare, you know, medical equipment. And I go, look, if you guys are doing jabs and you're going to pony up to this whole mask. And I looked at the website and they were, and a lot of websites are just putting stuff up as a front, but they're not enforcing it. And that's kind of where he was at, his 25 year old. And so we, we made common ground there like, hey, no, we're not going to enforce any of that.
That's great. We're all in a state of transition and bridging and that's, and if we don't let go of the division. And if we don't come with compassion, no matter how brainwashed someone is, or how many fronts they have to put up to hold their ground. If we don't open ourselves to that, we lose. We lose, we lose the game.
I'm coming out of people with pure love. I'm, I had a friend who's dead now, Jeff Lansing, uh, the Lansing brothers. And he always like, we would go surf in very dangerous places, adventure and stuff. And he always came in with a smile. And he, he was a warrior. He was a buff dude. He'd come in with a smile and you know, he had his billy club hidden down below. But man, when if you, if you cross this guy ruthless, you know? But he always came in with an open heart. And that's what I always loved about him. He died partially because of that. Yeah. Um, so that's kind of what I just showed you had a metaphor of a guy that had, who was at a five day silent retreat years ago and his girlfriend had broken up with him. He had a broken heart, blah, 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 playing the victim. And so I did just kind of straight faced him in front of 300 people. He's like, so you got a broken heart in the audience kind of gas, you know, like, ooh, what's the master going to say? You know, he goes, so your heart's broken open, so let it stay broken open. Don't find a new identity. Just walk around with a broken open heart. And to me, that like landed so major, I was like a whole new way. I was like, wow, what a reframe. Walk around with my heart broken open, like the Jesus metaphor, you know, those things of him pulling in the light coming out of his chest. These are called spirit gate points in acupuncture. There's a reason there's spirit gate points, you know, like, so to me, the point of everything is to get rid of the tools, get rid of the equipment. Cause we're just using the external world to validate the internal world. Right? That's the point for me is like, I don't want them to diagnostic equipment. And that's what I told the guy at this health point O conference, I go, if you want me in front of people, well, you're going to see a passionate man that's going to point out like, what do I need my hands and my smell and my taste? And writing down on a piece of paper, that's how I want to assess somebody, you know? I don't want all this fricking fancy equipment and relying on it. Cause what if the power grid goes down? Then all we got is our barefoot doctor techniques. And this guy's from India. And so I was talking about the barefoot doctors in India. And he, it was supposed to be a half hour call that went on for 65 minutes. And he invited me to stay with his family in India next time I'm there. I changed his life. He was like, he's like, you, you powerful man. I like you.
Oh, that's so cool. That's so awesome, Craig.
So we could be with kindness, you know, he wasn't even on, he was on our team, you know? But he's with people that are on the fence still, you know? And this is, it's important we come in with Kramer energy and they're like, here we are. All love and happy love bubbles. And big farts and all that shit.
Can I? Can I go back and just say one more thing about?
Sure. It's a free for all.
Yeah. Well, what, sorry, what was the word again that you used? It was something you took, uh?
Utopian agendas.
Utopian agendas. Okay. I really like that. I really, really like that. It's very, very empowering. And it sums up. Um, yeah, humanitarian agendas, utopian agendas, like I like taking the things that were used against us to actually like overcome all the BS. Like I love that. And, um, and I want to say what's, what's interesting, and I don't know if any of you have experienced this. Um, as you're learning about different peoples and different entities, utopian agendas. What I've learned is they're a great source of inspiration, not necessarily reliable. But they're a really good source of inspiration. What is reliable is continuing to align ourselves with them. Even though they're unreliable or sometimes reliable, or we don't really know. And I don't know, like this is, I feel like this is really important and I
Yeah. It's discernment. It's that, it's that discernment to know directly. Is it bullshit or not? Right? That's discernment to know directly.
Yeah. And here's the thing, like someone's utopian agenda could be a psyop. And maybe it is like, there's a lot of that. But there's psyops within psyops. And the thing is, is even though someone else's utopian agenda could be unreliable, it doesn't matter. If it's inspiring you to create your own and to co-create your own with your local community, with your family, with your friends, with your government, whatever, to do good things, to bring goodness to the planet, to bring healing to the planet. Good energy, right? Unity, all these things that have been taken from people, happiness, joy, positive emotions. It's like, if we can align with that, it doesn't matter what's true and what's false and what's a psyop. Because we're taking the illusion, the Maya, the matrix, the manmade matrix. That is just an illusion because the real matrix we know is the divine matrix. That was always here before and it's always will, will never go away. It's just always is. Right? And so once we understand that, well, Craig, I mean, that's like you said, the chess master, that's the game, but
Right.
The crazy thing about the game is when you really start to dive deep and some, sometimes learn painful truths that are very disturbing.
Yes.
You're taking time to go through that and that's actually building the spiritual inner tube, right?
Yes.
There's that, there's that bit of suffering. There's that broken heart. There's the opening. There's that, you're, you're going through the emotions. But at the same time, you're a humanitarian and we're, we're creatures of God and we, you know, we want good and we wanted, and so we can keep aligning. And for every stuff, for every little bit of suffering, there's more joy to be found, always, always. There's more opening, you know, and and more light and love. And that's, that's just how it, that's just how it works. And, and when you understand, when you start to really dive deep, you really understand, hey, there's people that for many, many years have actually employed others to build the chessboard. They don't even, they're not even king and queen. They're not even creating the chessboard. They're freaking employing others to build it while they watch the pieces play out.
Yeah.
And then there's people that give advice and once you, to those, and then once you understand how the game functions and you understand that they, that that's just an illusion. And really it's a creation that's infinite. It's whole. You're whole, I'm whole. We're not missing anything. We don't need anything filled from anyone else's agenda or idea or good news or bad news. We're complete. Once we get that. We, that's how we can transcend and actually be observers of this game instead of, um, you know, we can choose to play, but we can observe while we're playing. And understand the rules, understand, oh, it's, it's, it's actually doesn't have any power over us. And we can bring our own creativity to it.
Uh, Deanne had a couple of great comments that flashed in there, even on the recording, uh, they, they pop up. And then while you were talking, it was, uh, the one about the chess game, uh, Kelly, uh, she had a little comment about, you know, if you, if the pawns aren't willing to play, you know, to move, then there's no chess game. And, um, he's a great metaphor of the, the biblical metaphor, cause I spent my, pretty much my entire adult life translating these metaphors into pointers. And so the, the pointer here is being in the world, but not of the world. And Yogananda's metaphor to Swami Kriyananda that helped him sort of embody it more was imagine yourself like oil on water. Oil is still with the water, but it's not of the water, right? They never really mix. And I'm like, oh, I can get, I can feel that. Cause if I can feel something, then I can chew on it internally. You know, like, well, I can feel oil and water, you know, like I can, I can be with somebody, but not of them, you know, like. So for the empath, that's a good tool is, you know, knowing that here's my spiritual rubber hits the road for people is, um, if you say it's all one, then why do you need to build a force field around yourself when you're working with others? I mean, I'm just saying, you know? So I just metaphor was, he had us, actually the exercise was get a newspaper or magazine and go sit somewhere crowded, poke a hole in it. And let people's energy change you as they walk by, but don't let them see your sunglasses works. And I did this for a couple of hundred times and just let, and each person left a different imprint on me. The thoughts change, the feelings, the sensations. And that's part of like, just letting it come through and then letting it move through like a wind. That's where the point. You know, like, that's how I know people, how people are living, Deanne, like, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy just to dissect somebody. Because I've had so many people dissect me. Now it's like, well, this here. You know, there's nothing left to dissect. Cause it's all open now, you know? So let's help you live like this, cause there's a certain level of freedom, you know, that comes with just being open. So let's go, let's go to our share round. Unless there was another counterpoint or Deanne, when I, I think Deanne was cooking a little bit down there. You want to say something, Deanne?
Sorry, I'm finally getting to my food. A little, it's a little late and I shouldn't be eating protein in 1821, I, eight, 21, I understand, but I'm happy to join for just a few minutes. And so far, you know, it's, it's just more medicine that I need for sure to hear like-minded people. And yes, there is the utopian conspiracy. Um, this book, I've had this book, but I don't know how many years. It was written in the seventies.
Aryan conspiracy? Aquarian?
Aquarian. I want to read that.
It's pretty good, the aquarium.
I'm Aquarius. I am.
Well, because we're in the dawning of the age of Aquarius.
Age of Aquaria.
The age of Aquaria. And this came out when that, right about the same time, that whole thing, remember, do you remember hair?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right? If this is when this came out. Yeah. And it's, it's, it is about the next, I don't know. I think they say it's going to be till 2050 easily. That we're in for some rough times. We're in this huge transition, but we are getting through it and
Could you put that, the, um, in the comments, the author in the?
Yes, Marilyn for you, and I will.
Thank you.
So happy to be here.
So there's one other piece to finish the Kelly tangent was this book, I'm going to pin myself so you guys can see this. Um, I've been really into alchemy now for many years and I've been drawn to this alchemist here, John D. Through a, a symbol called the hieroglyphic monad that he had done in Alchemist, spotted it 20 years ago. I was always curious about this cat. And then I ran into this guy, Jason Lou, who had written a biography about John D. And I'm only have about, I probably about two thirds halfway through the book. So this is 1580 Queen Elizabeth the second stuff. And she had some black magics and dark arts associated with her. And Kelly, the reason I'm bringing this up is that he was, he was scrying with crystal balls, angels and stuff. And the angels that came through like Gabriel and stuff, there was different forces and trickery when brilliance and but this is the quote is, this is where the new world order started was with this dude.
Yeah, I believe it.
The new world order started in, in Britain in the late 1500s, early 1600s.
Yeah. Well, this, this, that was the, the burning times, right? And so that was when the great split happened, it was starting.
Right.
Dividing the patriarch with, you know, the, the society where we were all one and we were all, we could heal ourselves and yeah.
Well, it kind of, but it was already starting in ancient Sumeria. I mean,
Well, it was, it was inevitable because it was the, you know, there's just less, there's less good stuff around. So what's going to happen when there's less darkness?
Yeah. There's a lot to that story. That's like, that's like a 10 year class.
Yeah, there was a guy, there was an enlightened guy in, uh, in actually Kuwait of all places. He wrote this book that was, it was his summation of all of reality. It was like, you know, it's like eight hundred pages. It's like, this is the, the everything of everything, you know, the astrology using the, they go, Dan posted the, the book.
Yep.
Let's get a share period here. We got a, uh, okay, let's do a share period. Let's get somebody that hasn't been talking.
Your book, I'm, I'm like so fascinated with Enoch and all these apocrypha and hidden books. But by, you know, books that were hidden from the Bible. Craig, could you put that, um, title up too in the chat and the author?
Yeah, well, well, Eric is, uh, well, Eric's going to go first here if he wants to go. Eric, you got a little inspiring story. I'll start the, uh, the timer session. You want to share with the group?
Oh, God.
Mandatory.
An inspiring story. That I was a participant of or witnessed?
Yeah, any, any of the above.
Shit. I don't really think so, man, in all honesty, I'm not really feeling called to answer that.
Okay. Yeah. Well, we don't want to force, um,
Yeah, I wouldn't be giving you, um, really what's real for me. So I don't want to fake that.
All right. We're, we're going to move along then. Thank you, Eric. Uh, Hunter, you want to? I mean, you got a bunch of inspiring stories, you can tell.
Well, I am. I, I'm really inspired by all your energy. Wow. It's just great. I mean, I'm kind of guilty as charged a little bit. I've been falling into more of the dystopian agenda, just being really concerned about that. And, um, my, um, my, my inspirations partly been through my move. I moved from the west coast to Texas where I never thought I would be. And I've just gotten a real charge out of just kind of the real independent minded fuck you type energy here. I just, I just, just drive around. I want to kick my cowboy boots. There's all these huge, there's all these huge Texas flags by the freeway, you know? And I'm like, fuck, yeah, I'm in Texas.
Don't mess with Texas.
Don't mess with Texas. And I find great inspiration in these rivers, just swimming with these fishes and these turtles and the gretz and the crawdads. And it's really beautiful. So, um, and I, you know, I'm a big anthroposophist type person. I, I read a lot of Steiner. Actually, I was just on a Steiner group with Dennis Klowcheck, who was this teacher up at the Steiner College for years. And, um, I get a lot of inspiration from that, from that community. And of course he has his own cosmology of how this whole thing has evolved and this kind of modern materialist reductionist phase that really did kick off around the time of John D there, you know, with bacon and Descartes and Galileo and all those people. And, and you know, like anything, it's kind of how you slice it. It has its pros and cons. I mean, clearly there's so much that we've benefited from in terms of the materialist industrialist revolution and all the gifts that it's brought us, but there's a real downside and there's a shadow side. And, 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 and the time now, I mean, Steiner's big thing is he sees it as this great arc that in a way corresponds with the ancient Yuga, Yugak arc of the, the Vedas and the Hindus and so on, so on. It's like a time span of like 25,000 years or something like that. But the moral of the story is that we've been coming down, down, down into the middle ages. And the choice now is we can really have the opportunity to go much further into the sub natural realms of magnetism, electricity, radiation, and all that's coming towards us in terms of artificial intelligence and robotics and this technology, really to the point where they're this technology really to the point where they're talking very seriously. You see manifestations of the technological world actually merging now with the human body, right? And so we have a choice where we can really get stuck and go down or turn the corner and rediscover our spiritual origin. And so, yeah, I'm trying to. But yeah, I get scared sometimes when I, when I, when I see the the speed at which we're moving towards that merging with technology and and the the just the degree to which people have blinders about it, right? So yes, spiritual, the only way
What are you bringing? Okay, kind of here's a question, Hunter, is you still have the talking stick? But I'm intervening because what do you, this is what I ask myself when I get into these moments of like, ah, ah, and then I go, this little voice comes in, it's like this little angel behind my ear goes, what are you bringing to that moment?
Which moment?
So when you're in that situation with someone, it's like, what can I do? Because there's there's things we can control on how we're responding to that moment of stress or disconnect. I mean, getting scared, you know, Deanna has a comment. And I told a guy in a consciousness salon years ago, he was always avoiding any kind of polarized discussion. And I I confronted him in front of twenty people. I said, so what's wrong with a little polar polarity, brother? He's one of those yinned out feminized men and you got dressed down in front of the whole group because he just, he's like, he couldn't answer the question. It's like, there's, there's nothing wrong with disagreement. Disagreement means disconnect in today's world, right? Oh, I disagree with you. I'm going to disconnect from you. So Hunter, so I'm I'm curious because I just wanted, I keep, your dad just comes in as well, his dad passed. And so your dad's coming in through me and he's, you know, he he wants a voice here. So, you know, how are you doing with your father passing? And, you know, they'll find your story very inspiring, actually, that you try and move your family out to Texas and your fricking dad dies on the way. And like, wow, what a story.
Same thing happened to us.
Oh, really? Yeah, my dad died on moving day.
Yeah, same with the, he he died the night before we found out the morning of moving day. I was calling all the family, driving the car with the moving stuff.
What is that about? They don't want to move? They're like, fuck, I'm out of here. I'm out of here. I don't want to move.
Wanted to move where we're moving to. So my dad wanted to move to Mount Shasta from Hawaii. He wanted to find us and his angel came and it was intense like he, it was that we moved from Santa Cruz and it was like dumping rain, just sheets of rain. The driveway was flooding, like you couldn't even get into the car to finish loading. Um, but the next day in the sheets of rain seventeen, you know, when the diesels come by and that you can't see because the water shoots over you and it's like you're just praying that you're, you know, going to come out of it. Well, since like those conditions and it was crazy. The sea, he parted everything for us. The whole way, we just felt his, Gabe and I were driving together. Charlie had the bigger truck behind us. And I just, like, it was like you could just watch the cars. They just kept going like this. The whole way to Shasta, through the floods, through the puddles, they just kept partying and partying and partying. No spray from the diesel trucks coming over, nothing, just smooth. When we got into Campbell, there's this part where the freeway kind of bends around. It's like, then you see those big high rise buildings on the right, those towers. We get in and the sun comes up, like pull around the corner and there's I I just informed my aunt what happened. Yeah, on the phone, driving. Because my dad's partying, so I can talk to her. He's helping, you know, he's he's taking care of the external and I'm doing the internal. And then I'm, and then we were saying goodbye and I said, oh, by the way, I'm driving under a rainbow. It's going end to end over the freeway. Dad's sending it. He loves you. He's sending it from Hawaii in heaven in Hawaii. And I said that, hung up, called my brother. He answered, which never happens. I just went through a rainbow. Dad says hi. As he continues to part the cars. It was like, all right, there's so much more to the story. And I I I mean, I've got to write a book about it because this, the synchronicities are so intense. It's so inspiring, just the way everything's, Craig, you haven't even heard the whole thing yet.
No.
You haven't even, I mean, it's 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 miracle after miracle.
So I was driving that same day from Auburn North. On a probably a little bit ahead of you. And it was, I had the same feeling, like, I knew that I was on a divine mission to get up into Oregon. And it felt like the road, I was I was hydroplaning a lot, as you know, and I was like, I wasn't worried at all. I I didn't feel any worry. I felt protected. It was the honest feeling.
You knew, you just knew.
Right, so okay, let's talking, we kind of talking stuck Hunter out of his talking stick there. Sorry, Hunter. So your dad, so that Kelly gave a great, that's a great connection, by the way, of synchronicity between the two of you. Because you're both of the angel ilk. If you're on this container, that's for sure. So Hunter, your dad checked out the day you moved out also.
Yeah, except he he was moving with us, like he was, I was moving him, but he checked out. So yeah, it was obviously, yeah, it was very, it was very traumatic for the family. Because I was moving my mom and dad. I had been living with them in Reno and we were packing up to come to Texas. And we all got sick that September. He died at the end of the month. And, you know, so I don't know, I feel like, because now I'm dealing, now I'm essentially caretaking for my mom. And the hospital experience ended up being very good in Reno in the sense that they they were so kind and generous about letting the whole family come in to say goodbyes and stuff. And I feel, I feel very bad for people who don't have that opportunity. So I feel very blessed for that. But just watching him have to take that COVID test and stuff, I mean, they jabbed that thing like up his nostril, all the way down his throat. Came out all bloody. I'm like, oh, man, that that was hard to watch. And and, you know, decisions around morphine and what patient rights are and stuff. And I feel like I need to be better informed about that, even rights going into the hospital. I mean, I'm I'm concerned, I I'm holding off a colonoscopy because I'm trying to figure out a way around these these COVID tests, you know, it's it's just, it's disconcerting to feel like you're entering in a into a system that at this point, it's almost like a cult, you know, it's funny, I had this image, because my dad was a real kind of a warrior. You know, lion type person. And when they were putting them into the ambulance, this big huge truck, you know, kind of into the vault. And his hair was just kind of blown to the side, but he was real proud and stiff. And I just thought, man, I don't think he's coming out of that vault. You know, you just feel like you're kind of sucked into the system. So it's all kind of, that's the dark side of things. But, yeah, I mean, as much as we can, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm seeking out the people I can here in Texas who do have a belief in the spiritual side of things that always gets us through. It always brings us what we need when we need it. And I feel blessed here that people have come into my life who are bringing us what we need when we need it. So that's a great solace and blessing. And and one group, incidentally, if you haven't heard of it, you you guys heard of the Freedom Cell Network?
Freedom Cell?
So.
Oh, it's really inspiring. This guy, John.
But before you get off, put in the checks, I'll save the chat and have it available.
Yeah, so I'll tell you what, I have not been as inspired by a group of people in a long time, but I, a friend of mine sent me this link, hey, there's this thing happening near you in it was in the middle of May, they had this conference in Bastrop, which is about an hour away. It's up near Austin. And these guys are on fire, like, no fear, there there there's, the name of the conference was Exit and Build. It's just like, these are people who've studied all the matrix stuff and the dark side and, you know, the the cabal and the new world order and all that, like, they get it. They totally understand what's happening with COVID. But they're focused on how do we exit the situation and build a new world? So the teachers, the doctors, the lawyers, let's just So what was interesting about this gathering is it had a real permaculture vibe to it, like all the permies were there. You know, of how to create the homesteads and the agriculture and the alternative building and the alternative energy, but you also had the cowboys. You also had the fundamentalists and kind of these like old school farmer Texans who, and the common denominator was was COVID. Like, they're all like, we are not buying into this shit. So it was a very interesting blend of people. But the the lectures were great, the people, some of them were super inspiring, just saying that, yeah, we are kind of going through this. You know, this needle or this purge or this threshing where everything's being brought up, like this evil, as you say, it's been with us for a long time, right? These dark energies, this misuse of power, it's like, this is nothing new. You can read about it in the Bible in different contexts. But 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 really, what we're experiencing is a lot of this stuff is really coming to light in in a very bald way for a lot of people right now, right? And so we're, we're having these choices, but but the ways this particular group is responding, I found really inspiring. And so I went so, and so his concept is he's, he's creating these freedom cells. And the one in central Texas has, happens to be very energized and very big because that's where he's, he's based. But he's trying to replicate this model all over the country and all over the world. So there are freedom cells starting in these different cities. And there are people coming together, trying to form these, these networks of support, right? Where people, it's kind of permacultural in the sense, it's kind of like you bring your skills or you bring your talents so that you can share and find other people who have skills that you don't. And and they can be, they can be around different themes. So like, there could be a freedom cell, for example, who's has families and they're very intent on getting off the grid and actually creating and building an actual community where they're going to live and raise and school their children together. Or it could be something simpler where it's just a community of people who want to be able to share food from their gardens or whatever, you know. So there could be freedom cells in the city or whatnot. But anyway, it's it's a, it's an empowering movement. And 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 some of the some of the lecture, and so now I'm on his list, sir, but I got got to hand to this guy. I mean, he's a good marketer. I must get an email a day from him. There's always a new lecture. And there's, you know, there's always something that you can tap into. So that's been fun. So I'm part of the, my local freedom cell here and meeting some really cool people. Yeah, John Bush is his name. I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, I put the Freedom Cell Network in. If you just put his name in, then I'll save you the time. And let's see, we'll get a few other stories in here.
Can I do a quick response?
Sure. Yes, go right in.
So thanks for sharing that. That's awesome. I I did check that out once and was really inspired by, I mean, I didn't attend any live events, but someone posted it and yes, and I, and I actually am, you know, I, there's so many groups that I keep hearing of. I mean, it's just, I I don't like make notes of them. I just, I just suck in the inspiration. You know, and whenever I see it, it's just, it's just reaffirming that we're we're winning. And if you think you're losing, you're you're wrong. We are winning. And if you think we're losing, you are giving your attention to someone else's game. And you need to bring it back to the humanitarian agenda, the, what Craig said, the utopian agenda. You're realigning with the forces who are winning, which is us, which is the humanitarian, which is the people that are going for love. The people who are going for justice, real justice, not social justice, actual justice. Before it got twisted upside out. And and then the other thing I want to say is, um, so these like freedom cells, they're they're happening, these are happening everywhere. I'm meeting people in the most crazy places that you would never expect. You know, that that and they're freedom oriented. And it's like, like in Berkeley, I just met a therapist who works with teens in Berkeley who's unvaxxed. Kept her job, held her ground. She's amazing. I'm I'm, yeah, I, she wants to work with me and doing the wilderness programs with the teens to help red pill them and rehab them. And it's like, I mean, this is just, we are, we are winning. I just, I just want to say that because I don't think everyone understands that they have tried so hard over the years to oppress us. That the result of that, because their plan is so much more lame and stupid. It's God's plan, obviously. It's just, it's never going to work. It can't, it can't sustain itself. It's the most unsustainable, stupid thing you've ever seen. And it just doesn't function. It's dysfunctional. That's why it's dystopian, because it is, it's fricking dysfunctional. So you see it for what it is. Right? You see it for what it is. And it's like, oh, yeah. So the more they try to oppress us, the more they try to control us, the more they try to hurt us and manipulate us. Guess what? The stronger we get, the more free we get, the more empowered we get, the more independent we get. The more we start connecting with each other and the more innovative we get. And it's everything they don't want is what they're producing. So we are winning.
Okay, yeah, there was a young, I want to acknowledge Ben Sokolow, he was on for a second down and his is another young man, thirty-five, thirty-six, that I've been working with on a couple of different levels. He's a, he's, he's awakened for sure. I wanted to get his story, but he he said he had shitty wifi in the comment. So I want to acknowledge that young man. He he heard a little bit of what you said, Kelly, and, you know, like I've taught some classes up at his house in Marin. So he's one of these like freedom cells within that whole brainwash Marin. I mean, Marin's pretty bad. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, bless blessings if you're holding it there.
He's been holding his own up in Marin, yeah, bless his heart. But to who hasn't shared? Anybody, anybody's been shared? Julie, do you want to share or just want to keep listening?
I can share. I don't know how great my share will be. My story with, what do you call it on your, on your email, your website? The big trouble, the big problem. What do you call it, Craig? That you're talking about our experience and I haven't been tested. I haven't been fucking vaxxed.
Oh, jabbed or tested.
I recognize my people because I can see their fucking face. That's how I know my people. And when I was in Santa Cruz, I've had cognitive issues, like fucking serious, excuse my French, cognitive issues, serious cognitive issues. So I have to like look carefully to find my people. So, you know, I don't feel anxious all the time. I have to know who my people are because they don't, you know, have their mask on. And in Santa Cruz, you know, I'd see whole families walking into the store, no mask. I'm like, there's my people. Go get next to them and say hi. You know, I I kind of got autistic that way, you know, I had to like really be upfront and say, I need support.
Yeah.
And that's how I met Ellie and the freedom people, you know, I saw them all white hair. I'm like, there's my people, no mask. There's their face. There's fifty people's faces right there, you know, I could relax a little bit and it, it was nerve wracking for me. I couldn't wear a mask. I'd go places and and, you know, like the store.
Yeah.
Have to wear one. And it was so physically debilitating for me that it was hard to get food and even function.
Yeah.
I, where mask wearing is like not for me at all, no way. So I don't know, no vax, no mask, watching how different people do it. Like you said, it really shows, you know, who your people are. It surprises you, you know, like church out here, no masks at church. You know, and right off the bat, you know, they're like, actually, a few people like were about a week, they were just like, what is this? What is this? And they were like thinking they should wear a mask because they got shamed into it. I got shamed into it a bunch. I did, right off the bat, I got shamed into it by my peers. You know, the hippies capitulated in Oregon. Our people, the our age group capitulated. It's so pathetic. I heard, I heard old hippies tell me, they were, they were courting, they were wearing masks in this community so they could go to fair. They were like wearing masks so they could go to fucking Brighton Bush. I go, don't talk to me about that shit because I already have brain problems.
You can tell them, uh, true liberal, true liberals believe in liberation.
The hippies, the hippies so capitulated here in Oregon. Talk about peer pressure, like old hippies go, you're not wearing a mask because, and I should be, you know, just pressuring me. Just shocking.
So you, Julie.
And that's not just wearing a mask. I'm talking about vaccinate, 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 vaccinate. These old hippies are just like falling by the wayside vaccinating in droves. For the for the greater good, for the greater good. It's shocking.
Julie, um, so I'm trying to get the, I'm trying to dig the gold out of this. So what I want to paraphrase for you then is. You know, Kelly, I met Julie through another uh man who's not on this call up in Oregon and she's got forty acres on the river out of Corvallis. How many?
Eight.
Eight acres, sorry, eight acres, uh, you know, beautiful. So um. Julie. I've been learning more through Carol Bjorn and the consciousness access consciousness work because they've got some tools for these subtleties that I. Really kind of dig a few of them and one of them is just like. Ken Wilbur had a saying out of uh the C I I S and Ken saying was, you are not what you become aware of. And it's a great pointer because when you become aware of something, then you're there, you have an option now. You're not asleep and embedded in it. You're not in it anymore. You're of it now. You're in the room, you're not of the world. You've identified. Uh, the awareness that you actually are has separated the theater piece from the theater temporarily, so you can get a better view. Like, oh, I was in this fight and I said some things I regret and you know how that happens sometimes you're in the fight and you just suddenly go. And you just go, what are we doing? Like right in a little fight, like what did I just say? And then that's the, that's grace. You are not what you become aware of. Yes, you are not what you become aware of. It's Ken Wilbur um.
I was just sharing my story, you know, in the times of just, you know. Finding out who my people are and discovery of that.
Well, that was the blessing of covid too, is it really, it really separated out like what's real and what's not and. Like my family got jabbed, but they came back around and that's been the point of Ellie's group. Actually, we had a discussion for three or four weeks about. How to handle people that are jabbed that want to come into the group without freaking them out. So we have to vet people slowly. Because if you come into this group and you start hearing about the horrors of being jabbed, you're going to lose your mind. So you've got to be introduced slowly from that world sometimes, um, and that's where we need like peacekeepers and. You know, that a lot of the teens and the young adults to me didn't buy it. From what I can see, but Kelly, I don't know what you've seen, but a lot of them were like, they were calling bullshit, like, you know, like, no, this isn't real.
It's like fifty fifty.
Yeah, the sad thing, sad thing is if you're playing sports, you had to get vaccinated.
That's true.
That was super sad, super sad.
That's true.
Yeah.
So. Being solution based, um, Julie. So the solution that I want to honor you for is you've kept yourself alive and keeping your mission here in your earth suit intact. Through an incredibly difficult time, and that's my reflection to you. Um, she's been diagnosed with Parkinson's, Kelly, so we're working, we're doing a little.
I'm trying to get undiagnosed. I'm working to be undiagnosed now.
You don't want to be identified with the condition because I think a lot of this is possession. I believe there's spirits that are, they take advantage of you when you're weak. And that's what I've been consistently seeing more recently is pointing out people how they drain their life force. One quick example. Young client comes in with Lyme, my brother referred, and um you'd have Lyme attacks. In his joints and I uh he had a girlfriend and they looked really happy and sexual together. So I was like, hmm, angel, what, knock, knock, ask this question. I go, how much are you ejaculating? You know, very blunt, within the first ten minutes, I earned a little bit of trust and then right in with the. Through the bait out and he he they looked at each other. And it was like they got it immediately. He said, wait, you're telling me that the more I ejaculate, the more my life force goes down and then I'm more susceptible to the organisms. And I'm like, that's exactly what I'm saying. Go home, don't change a thing, just do this. And don't ejaculate as much. And he came back and he's like, oh, my God, I I can't believe I would. So there's a teacher now that he says there's no such thing as illness. There's only a shortage of energy. I love that. There's no such thing as illness. There's only a shortage of cheat. So when we're weak, we get taken advantage of. By opportunists, right? I got an opportunist energy. I'm full, I'm I'm owning my opportunist, you know. Everybody in this call is a little bit of an opportunist energy. You wouldn't be here if not. There's only a shortage of cheat, yeah. There's no such thing as illness. That's a, that's Morley Robbins with the Root Cause Protocol. He's the one that said that.
Morley, Marley?
Yeah, M O R L E Y, Morley Robbins, R O B B I N S of the Root Cause Protocol. That's borrowed from him. It's a regular aphorism he uses um and. Yeah, thanks, Kelly. Um. So we're kind of down to the last ten minutes or it's kind of like winding it down into like, what are we? You know, like, what's the nugget? What's the gold nugget to take uh from this? Um, one thing is, as far as follow up, the last Tuesday of every month will be, this will be scheduled for. What the hell? And same format and then.
Um, Eric's video.
Okay, and then the other thing is that uh follow up is that there's a men's and women's group. I advertised it at the Freedom Gathering. There's an in-person one. On the first and third Sunday and then a mixed gender group on Tuesday nights. So it'll be next week, seven to nine, same time. And so the the advertisement is a lot of women wonder what it's like to be in a men's group. A lot of men wonder what it's like to be in a women's group. So we're going to have both. And so there'll be times where we'll be able to watch the women process if they want and the times of the women will watch the men process if they want. And that was based on a few workshops I had with Carrie and Paul over at Brother One, is that. Mixed results. That's why I wanted to do it this way. So. You guys want to join next week? It'll be a different, it'll be a different um link, but I think that. None of you guys are on the list or not. So that's similar format, but there's a there's a website with a webpage and there's themes every week. So. Next week is the question theme running is, what does it mean to be a healthy man or woman in the twenty first century? That's the query to come in with this. What does it mean to be a healthy woman in the twenty first century? What does it mean to be a healthy man? What does it mean to be a healthy? Transgender, whatever they're saying, you know, like, you know, if you don't want to have a no gender, then what does that mean? You know, what is a healthy version of that? You know, we want to be inclusive in our circle of uh the other category. Uh, how is that going with teenagers, Kelly? Uh, do we see? More or less transgenderism? Are you seeing up in Chasta, Kelly, with the kids, teens?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I think there's. Some physiological things that I'm sure you'd agree with hormones and plastics and food and the way that they.
Yeah.
Screw up the hormones in the body, you know, and and I think these kids are. They're kind of floating between genders because there's just. So much unnatural stuff happening in their bodies and like they've got too much testosterone and they've got too much estrogen and it's just like. You know, it comes across in in different ways and um. So, yeah, I um, I I have a lot of respect. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm I'm, I've always been in a real masculine kind of body. So I have a lot of respect for people who are dealing with that gender issues. Um, you know, like I just was always a tomboy and. Try, you know, my mom wanted to be, she wanted me to be feminine so badly. I mean, she'd be, I mean, I'm wearing a dress right now, so maybe she'd be happy. Masculine, I'm just like so masculine, like in so many ways. I I was a tomboy. I played with brothers. I climbed trees. I did all the things that.
God, it's such a juicy topic.
And I still do and I still love adventures and I love that kind of masculine stuff, so. Um, and I, you know, I'm very like a flat chest. I mean, I've got, there's, I know men that have bigger boobs than me.
Did you ever feel like you were a man?
Yeah, did you ever feel that when you were a kid or young lady?
I just felt annoyed that like girls were all into their appearance and. Had to do dresses and things like that. It was just annoying to me. I just wanted to like go out and fight.
But the thing is, the thing is, it just feels like in the old, I mean. I mean, I definitely think that there's something to this um um. What do you call it? Gender fluidity or being non-binary or whatever, because let's face it. Who with a penis fits all the stereotypical male stereotypes and who with a vagina fits all? You know, it's not like it's just totally sugar and nice and polywogs and puppy dog tails. There is some fluidity there, right? But the thing with with me is, it's like, so be fluid. You can have a penis and wear a dress. It doesn't mean you're a woman. You know, it's like, just like, what the fuck? And that is what, that's one of the um. Ironies of this, all the non-binary people is what do they do? They jump right back into a binary world. It's like, wait a minute, you just told me it's non-binary. Why do you have to pick? Jesus Christ.
Well, I'm I'm thankful too that like I, that there wasn't all this pressure to go get surgery and things like that.
Yeah, but so that's, but that's.
Can you just accept what God gave you and be okay that?
No, but that's part of the dark, that's part of the dark politics behind all this. You follow the money. Why all of a sudden, out of nowhere, is there a T at the end of the L G B? It's because pharma threw a shitload of money at these L G B organizations to get them to have the T. Now, why would they do that? Because it's a lifelong clientele customer base for medical procedures and drugs. It's about the money, folks.
It is.
It's just about the money. So all of a sudden now, out of, out of the blue, I mean, yes, of course, in indigenous. Cultures or whatever, there's always been some two spirit people, but it's been a very tiny minority of people. And everyone wants to be it. Why? It's because of the advertising and the money. I think it's just awful.
As far as natural law goes and and teens to tie this together. Um, my last group, we were in this amazing place and I I had actually prayed to God before we went because I was like. I know this is going to be all about fun and and adventure. It's going to be intense. Like, we're, we're going to intense terrain here, right? Like. Twenty six hundred foot elevation gain, forty pounds on her back. We're going in one night. You know, there's, it's just, there's a lot of bears. There's a lot of things. There's a lot of intensity. And so I was like, okay, I don't want to ruin the fun and the adventure. I don't want this to be about some curriculum that I want the kids, I want to educate the kids about.
Right.
But like, if if I meant to, if I meant to teach them, this group. About natural law, anything about it. And about their place in this universe. Please show me, present me with the time and let me know when it's right to speak. And then boom, it was adventure. It was fun. It was fun. It was adventure. It was like, there were bears, there were guns, there were shots there. I mean, it was like. So epic, okay? There were waterfalls, many waterfalls. And in that, in all this intensity and mosquitoes and trying to cook and all these things that we're doing. There ends up being a time. Where all of a sudden I realized that we're all just sitting on a rock together overlooking a lake. It just happened. And I sat with that and I was like, whoa, is this it? Like, is this, is this it? And I just was breathing into that and I was like. Oh, okay, this is it. And then I, and everything went silent and I just said, I asked the kids, I said. If. There's this term that um. I'm becoming more and more familiar with and it's called natural law. And I don't know if you, have you guys ever heard of it? And they're like, oh, and I was like. So I just have a question. If you could take that term, natural law. And let's say you just reflect on those two words and if you could create. A definition, like if you could define in your words, what do you think natural law? What do you think that term could possibly mean? What would that be? And we just sat in silence looking at the lake. You know, and it was just such a different, it was like such a different vibe, like it was all about like, ah, you know, teens like.
Yeah, yeah.
Then all of a sudden, this strange opportunity presents itself and. And and they were silent for so long. I hadn't heard silence like that. With these, with this crowd, it was such a trip. And finally, and someone said, well, like. Well, what is it? We don't have enough information. What does it mean? And I was like, I was like, well. You know, someone else made it up, so why can't you? Look, and I'm like, look, I just want to see what you think about it. Like, I don't want to, I have my own ideas, but I don't, I don't really want to talk about my ideas. I want to hear. I want to hear your ideas. And um it was interesting because it was really hard for them and. The first person to actually break the ice was the girl that had been unschooled the longest. And she said, well, I think it's mostly just, I would say it's the way things naturally work.
Oh, very good.
And I was like, that's so beautiful. I was like, that is, that is, yeah, that is, that is like probably one of the main. Components of natural law and then um.
Very few words, right? Very succinct.
The really school, the most school girl. It was, she chimed in and goes. Well, yeah, but you know, we need manmade laws because it was just natural laws. I mean, look at the wild, right? Look how chaotic it could be, like people could just kill each other, like get away with it. And it just like was so fricking cool. And it had been this amazing like moral philosophical like and it just, and then we got, and then we got into the manmade matrix and the divine matrix. It was all like. From this pondering and like. It's like, it was just like, there were so many layers of red pilling that happened that it's like a parent's dream come true. And I didn't write the curriculum. God, I just let God figure it out and and like, let it happen and and that's natural law.
Beautiful. That's so cool.
But that's like, and that's, that's the best ending ever. Hunter, you're up late, eleven oh four.
I am, I need to go. Thank you all so much for your inspiration. Beautiful people you are. And my goal is that we're winning and I appreciated that reminder, so thank you.
See you.
Yeah, we're winning. It's just, it's so amazing. Every day I see it, every day. It's all I see is how we're winning.
That's beautiful.
So fricking cool.
Okay.